Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would ask that you have your cellphones on and you're not required to be called for emergency, that you put it airplane mode and would you stand and please pledge allegiance to the Constitution? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the true republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here today. Just as a reminder, we have a total of 15 minutes for public comment, three minutes per time if anybody has an item they want to bring up. Also during the presentation for the budget, let me remind everybody that this is not a public hearing on the budget. It'll be open for comment on the public comment aspect of it and we go from there. So I would should respect that and we'll go from there. First order of business, proclamation for Cheryl Huckins. We, the board, thought it was, I don't want to say, but anyway, the board thought it would be a very good gesture to make this day for her. And so I'm going to ask Connor to read the proclamation. Connor?
Thank you. Whereas, we are here today to express our appreciation to Cheryl Huckins and to honor her for distinguished 19-year career with the town of Barrington. And whereas Cheryl served the town in many ways throughout her tenure, compiling the annual town report was a source of great pride for Cheryl, and she received statewide recognition of the 2005 addition. Additionally, Cheryl worked diligently to bring the town of Barrington into current use compliance, a crowning achievement of hers. Over the years, even the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration has benefited from her organization and work ethic by using spreadsheets she developed. And whereas Cheryl has always been a strong supporter of the town of Barrington and has served the town well, she has volunteered as a citizen and an employee and assisted the town with countless programs and activities. And whereas, on behalf of the entire select board, George wants to express his sincere appreciation to Cheryl for her loyalty to the town of Barrington over the past 19 years and wish her much happiness as she begins this exciting new chapter in her life. Now, therefore, we, the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board, do hereby proclaim Monday, October 29, 2018, as Cheryl Huckins' Day in the town of Barrington and urge all citizens and employees to join us in congratulating Cheryl on an outstanding career with the town of Barrington and expressing our sincere appreciation to her for her unwavering dedication and service to the town. In witness thereof, we have here unto our hand and caused the seal of the town of Barrington to be affixed this 29th day of October, 2018.
Thank you, Connor. Just very little thing. I will say that we had town, all employees put on a very nice luncheon for Cheryl. We were able to sit down and express all of our joys and concerns for her moving on and everything else. And it's just a shame that she decided to move on because she's just been a joyful face to see up there, and the way she works with everybody is just outstanding. Any other comments from the board?
Well, I hope she enjoys every minute.
I wish her all the best in retirement.
I have a feeling she'll be around still helping out the community.
I know that.
Thank you personally.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, next is the budget. We will hear from the town clerk, please.
Just a little memo.
Can you turn on the mic? You can come up here and sit down if you'd like. If you want to stand there, okay, you can stand there. Either way, it's acceptable.
Green light. Yeah, there you go.
Can this move? Chuck it in. Just a little report on where my office is right now, basically. Just to give a summary of what's going on right now. I am offering the ability to renew your dog licenses three months early, so at the end of the year now, people can register early as long as their dogs are fully licensed. It was a big issue, you know, when they get their civil forfeiture, so I'm trying to help people so they don't be doing that. I continue to offer the online payment with the electronic transfer from your checking account, so you can do your car registration, dog license, and vital records. And we're preparing for the state general election.
Kim, can you pull that just a little closer to you?
I'm preparing for the state general election, which is going to be held next Tuesday. And it's going to be an extremely busy one. The office is currently up 6% for the year and about 7.8% for the month of September. And just below, I've listed different totals for cars registered, revenues taken in for cars, and just some other figures there that you've explained. Any questions on, yep?
How are we doing, huh? Does that mean that you're taking in more than you expected?
Correct. We're 6% over last year's figure as of today.
Excuse me. Peter, do you have any comments?
We just saw that.
Yeah, so did we.
I believe that Kim has some answers regarding the questions the ABC had earlier. This is in keeping, what this is, Peter, is the board's selectmen ask for reports from departments at the time they give their budgets so they can update what's going on. Some departments they see on a regular basis, some like him, they only see, you know, on a much less frequent basis. So this is more general information than it is specifically budget-related.
So no questions, just where I am?
I'm waiting to see if they have any.
Yeah, I'm going to address the ABCs and some of my explanations for the budget here that would answer the questions.
Please do so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to start, the shifting of the payroll lines are due to my success in management that I have proposed, about switching my current 34-hour position to 220 hours. And in specific, on town clerk line, it's for the town clerk equipment. That's used to maintain. I want to keep it where I have it, basically. I recently found out at a conference last week that the DMV printers that the state has provided, they're going to discontinue that starting June 19. They provided maintenance and everything for them, and they're going to discontinue their maintenance on it. So I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to buy that printer, what will go on with that, or I would have to replace them. And that's going to be possibly $400 or $500 for that. So that's why I have an equipment line in place to do replacements for many different things if I have it. I know I had submitted that with my election, with my budget. There's a line that lists equipment that I might need to replace. So the equipment line, I want to maintain where I have it. Let's see. So the maintenance line, that is friendly issues with the computers. If I have anything that happens out of the scope of regular maintenance when they come by and I need to have Rockport come by and do any work on the computers, the maintenance line, that would, I would have to pay out of my budget. And the postage line, I maintain it a little bit higher than I usually expend because postage has been known to go up, and I send renewal letters out once a month, and that's 500, 600, you know, renewals every single month. And then I have the dog renewal letters that I'll send out. So I just want to always make sure I have a little bit of an overage to cover that. And the election lines, equipment budget, that money is used for the sound system at the deliberative session, and it's also there in case something would happen to an AccuVote machine and I would need to replace it, and that's to cover that cost. So those were the three items. Peter, I don't know if you have.
What was the, beginning your presentation, you find about 30 hours to 20 hours. What does that relate to?
Yeah, that's just the payroll lines. If you see a shifting in my payroll lines, I had spoken to the selectmen before. One of my clerks wants to retire, so over the next couple of years, I'm going to try to shift her to a 20-hour position, hire another person for 20 hours instead of the current 34 hours I pay her. And then in about a year or two, I'd like to make sure to move it back up to the 34-hour position or possibly a full-time position.
But none of the lines were that?
No, there's, no, what I have projected, it's in there already, because I went through it with John if you look. Because it's going to be a range, she's going to work so much of the year at her 34-hour position, so it's really only for nine months out of the year. It's only a six-hour difference, basically. So that's why you see a little bit of a difference on the part-time hours, because it's really a six-hour difference. So I'll be paying the new person less than what I pay dead. Ideally, I have the 220-hour positions.
I think Peter's, I think Peter's question relates to the fact that we don't reflect that in the way we divided between full-time, part-time salary lines.
Well, it's all rolled into the part-time hours, because the full-time is Camille, is my deputy, and there's my salary, and the part-time is everything. It's dead, and then dead switched, and hopefully another person working. So it is, it is an increase of about $2,500, but that's really just a six-hour roughly difference that I should be paying out. And it would cost the town less ideally if I get that switched to the 220 hours, because there'll be no insurance offered to the employees, because there'll be 220-hour positions. But again, that's hopefully just for a couple of years. I want to eventually make sure I bring that other person back up, because the office is only getting busier. Yes, Peter? Yes, Peter?
Do you have any benefits?
I'm sorry?
We need to adjust this. This budget does not reflect what you just said.
What do you mean?
Benefits went up.
Of course, the benefits went up, because that's across the board. That's across the board.
No, it, we need to readjust these salary lines to reflect what you said. I don't think it'll make a big difference in the total, but this is status quo.
Let's move on.
The benefit line will come down, because there won't be benefits for part of the year, and the part, full-time line will come down and the part-time line will go up. I think that's what Peter's saying he doesn't see.
I went through the numbers with you. That's what I thought we had determined, because right now, but are we right now?
I'm going to have to check these numbers.
Okay. So but right now, dead does not partake in any of the insurance, so is that already budgeted somehow in there, even though she does not?
I don't want to get into discussion with individuals as to benefits in public.
We have to refrain from missing individuals' names.
We will look at this.
Okay.
Peter, do you have any other questions? No. Thank you. The board have any questions, please? I have a question for you on the town clerk maintenance line. You have $1,000, and currently, I don't see anything that's been expended.
The maintenance line is for, like I said, if something happens with my computers that's out of the scope, if I have to call in Rockport to service my computers, I would have to pay out of my, out of that line, which occasionally, if something happens with the computer, I can't wait, they come every other week or so, I would need them to come in and service the equipment.
Thank you. Also, over on line 4611, office supplies, you have $2,900, an expenditure of 1,100 or 1,200. Is that line item too high, or do you think it's going to be adequate?
It's probably accurate, because I am due for toners, and toners that I purchase are several hundred dollars for the DMV printers, and I use other ones, there's other things that I would use it for. I believe it would be very close to being fully expended. That's why I think most of my lines, except for the maintenance, won't be expended, because I hope not to use it, but it's there if I have an emergency.
All right, thank you. So any other questions for the board?
I just have a general comment. From the maintenance end, with regard to Rockport, as long as we're doing what we say we're supposed to do and we're utilizing Rockport the way that we should, we shouldn't have any, like, major unexpected issues from a computer standpoint. I mean, that's really the whole target of having Rockport doing what they're doing for us.
What, as far, the maintenance that we're looking at here is a hardware break that we're looking at, and that would be something they would have to, you know, if we had to replace a laptop or a tower because of hard drive failure or something like that.
But wouldn't we typically catch that in our contracts?
But when you catch it, you'd have to fix it, so there would be a maintenance associated with it. It's a question becomes, do we put those maintenance items in the various departments, or do we put that maintenance all in finance administration contracts? Because there will be repair costs associated with what they do.
Yep.
Associated with materials, we have to buy stuff. And I mean, their labor is all part of that contract, but we will be buying stuff, and that's what, that's what's in here.
So if there's an emergency that I won't charge an hourly rate, that's included, you said?
Yes.
Because before, with the other one, we had, I paid an hourly rate?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure on that.
It's the, it's the pass that you're paying for in here.
Right, but the likelihood of $1,000 in parts means you've broken a laptop and you're buying a whole brand-new laptop plus software and everything else. And the software, we're just going to transfer from one device over to another, because we've already paid the licensing fee on a laptop.
It, with this change to Rockport, I think you're right, that we could reduce the maintenance lines to reflect mainly what would be anticipated hardware.
Right.
Materials.
Yes, selectmen have.
Do we currently have, thank you, Andy, do we currently have a hardware replacement plan?
We have an approximation. That's part of what we're working on with Rockport.
Okay.
That's, that's been a big piece of technology and making sure we have a lifecycle plan around equipment.
We, in rough terms, we've been at the town hall, working on a five-year, we bought mostly new computers in 2011 when we went to the new building. And after, and we started replacing, we've replaced almost all of those.
Okay, good.
So that.
Glad you followed up on that.
Well, I was giving you hints. There are some that. That has not happened in every department. Police, we just replaced all of their computers, because theirs were more dated. And fire, we haven't got to yet, and Rick, I think, is aware that there needs to be some replacements done in his department.
Okay, the election comments, I want to, Peter, do you have another comment?
On elections for?
No, we're not elections yet, sir.
Oh, I am sorry.
No, not yet, sir.
Nothing on that.
All right, now I'm going to allow, Kim, would you please do the select board election rolls?
She received a memo from Connor.
Yep.
And John has given you in his packet.
I mean, I think this is the election budget first, correct?
No, no, no.
Peter had an election budget question.
Yes, I'm holding him up, because I'm going to do the select board roll on election day, then I'm going to take the election budget. Why don't you want to go with the budget?
Well, we're already talking about budgets, so let's finish.
Fine, and all right, go ahead and go to the election day. We all follow.
So the election budget is less, because we only have one election next year.
Peter, any comments on that?
And I think you had a question on the machines as far as the coding, not the ballot.
Well, yeah, the election equipment, it's the line that you had asked about, Peter, that's the election equipment line. Like I said, that addresses, I spend money for the sound system that we use if the deliberative comes out of that line, and the difference is, if an AccuVote machine would sound loud, die on me, I would need to get it replaced, and that's roughly the cost put into the system.
Okay. But the actual software for the ballot machines is?
That's coding.
That's coding, yeah.
Any else? Board members, any questions on election? Saying none, we'll move on to the duties of the select person during election day.
So, yeah, I had John's group, duties of selectmen, for the five page, that's out of our election procedure manual, it just goes through as well the different duties that selectmen are basically, it's, that's a complete list of them. And I know Connor had issued out a memo that lists more specific RSAs and information, so that's mostly for your information, to give you some knowledge on what is expected, basically.
Any questions from the board? Tracy, please.
So last year, when they, or last election, they mailed us all a booklet from the State House.
Was it called Election Procedure Manual?
Yes.
That's in here.
And it's this deck.
Oh, yeah.
And in there, it indicated that we were responsible, the select board members are responsible, when someone comes in and signs up the day up, and anything about their registration vote is questionable, that we have the responsibility as select people to review those.
And it's also, we use the supervisors of the checklist. Shannon, she has two supervisors, whether they are the ones that register them in. I guess if anybody had any questions, like, we haven't had a challenged voter in, oh, a very long time.
Okay.
So I don't know if that case, you might be asked to come in and weigh in on the information.
Okay. So we, I think we've established a schedule for the current election day, where we would all cover an appropriate amount of hours based upon having three people at any given time from this elect board day.
Okay. So I saw in the memo that Connor had given, he listed some eligible people to use as your pro tem. The issue I only have with that is I have those people designated in specific areas to work, traffic, certain other things, so I don't know, it would be nice to have that extra person. Right on. I'm just saying, because we have, we have a certain amount of people that we've already utilized to do specific tasks, so if you have them kind of acting on your behalf, I don't know if they'd be pulled away a little bit, though.
No, I think that we've covered, we've covered schedules, so that you have three select board members there throughout the day.
Okay.
And we're all covering 6.45 hours, which is what it equates to.
Okay. It's just, in the reading of how I interpreted it, it was listing that it was an all-day type of thing, meaning either you're there all day, or you appoint someone to be there all day. That's how I interpret it.
That's not what.
Well, I understand when Suzanne, so Suzanne and I called the Secretary of State's Office. That's on. So there, it lists in the, in actually the New Hampshire Constitution and the RSAs that the selectmen need to be there all day. So the Secretary of State's Office interprets that as three, a quorum for Barrington. So three members, you would need to have a quorum of the select board for the entire day.
So three people at all times?
Three people at all times.
Okay.
One person, and I think what select person Hardikoff was saying, was that they've worked it out, so if they rotate at 6.45 hours, they are able to have three of them, any given three of them.
At any given time.
Present at any given time throughout the day. So a quorum, which says, as would their partner.
Okay. How do you feel about that, Ron?
Ron, do you have any other further comments?
No, that was my biggest concern. Just looking forward to having additional help and not losing what we have, so.
Thank you. Kim, do you have anything else?
No, it's going to be a very busy day.
Any other questions from the board? Saying none, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Move on, we'll move on to the land use. Asha Gases, please. You can either sit down over there. Thank you. Okay.
When I prepared the budget this year, Administrator Scruton had asked us to identify some lines that possibly changed. I just wanted to point out that the proposed payroll reflects changes that were made by The earned time buyout remains the same at $1,000. We've not used that in my office since I've been here, so based on history, it's possible we could eliminate that $1,000 for reduction. I did increase line 4349, the consultants, by $1,000. This reflects increased costs. We utilize Strat Regional Planning quite often, and their, their costs have gone out, gone up. I tried to keep it as close from year to year as I can. I spent $7,000 and I did move it to eight. Reduced the telephone line, that was based on actual cost. I did have a question from the ABC in regard to advertising. The advertising, as of the end of July, we had expended $3,046 already on a $4,500 budget, so I increased that line to $6,000 for next year. Advertising is mostly for notices, legal notices in the newspaper, which we are required to do under the state law. It's a reflection of how many applications may come before us, how many zoning amendments we have, how many public hearings, and it's based on length and, you know, the number of digits used, so it is at best a historical guesstimate. All the other lines remained unchanged. Basically, it reflects a 3.43 overall increase without the $1,000 increase for the advertising, which is also, I might add, reimbursed each time, most of it is reimbursed. Each time we post for a notice for a public hearing based on a planning or zoning application, we do receive $75 from the applicant for each case. So that is, we have to budget for it, but we also do get reimbursed for a good portion of that. We also do get reimbursed, advertising, for postage. A lot of the postage we get reimbursed for, because we do charge for our certified mails at $7 per letter. So if we had eliminated the earned time buyout and the advertising, we would be down at a 1.28% increase.
Thank you. Peter, do you have any more questions?
I think she covered the questions we had. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions, please?
Is there any thought that the postage might go up and we might have to pick up more?
Well, I think the general, the forever stamps have gone up a couple of cents. I think we still are a little bit above cost on the certified, so I would rather keep that at that nice round $7 figure. I think there are $6 and something per piece now.
Make a comment that item two, that should read 4154, not 4290.
Oh, you're correct.
That'd be a hell of a slash in your budget. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
So something else that we probably should be considering is, we have the plan to change over the phones this year. So the costs associated in everyone's phone lines is likely going to hit a point that would, would go away from there, and then if we have better controls with regard to our cellphone plans.
This is all cellphone.
I didn't include the landlines, it's just the cellphone.
The landlines are all in government buildings.
Okay.
Or I think it's government.
And if we're, you said we're at 3600 for advertising?
We were, as of the end of July, we'd already expended $3,046 at the end of July. So halfway through the year, we'd expended $3,046 of a $4,500 budget.
Right.
So, so twice 3,000, they put $6,000 for next year. It's still guesstimating based on what we have, we have come through.
So if I were to take, like, our report based on 10-3, we've spent 30, basically 3,600, are we anticipating to spend?
I would estimate.
$900? 3600, are we anticipating to spend $900 in two months?
I could tell you, at one point, we did a posting for zoning amendments and they added $750.
And we will be posting.
I have, we may, we may have overextended the line so far to zoning applications, planning applications, zoning amendments.
And, and we will be posting for the public hearing on the planning, proposed zoning articles in December, correct, as we come out of this budget?
Correct.
I don't know if we have any.
Not yet, but we might. It's hard to tell. They talked about, they've talked about doing something with solar, we're not sure.
Yeah, but based on the conversation with them, I don't think we'd be ready to...
Yeah. But...
We can revisit that line.
Do you think it's too low, or too, too, am I asking too much? It's just such a, I don't know, you know, at this point. I don't know for next year, you know. I do know we've had a design review for that 212 acre, you know, if that comes forward at the beginning of the year, there's a number of butters associated with that. It all depends where the projects are located, too, you know, so.
Let me get that, Dan, please.
In your report, John, I will add in a line, what was your plan?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be addressed?
Right now would be appropriate.
Which one was that?
The Town and Land Committee's working with UNH.
You have to turn it up, please.
Town's Land Committee's working with UNH. About getting a consultant for forest management plan, different properties and stuff. Thompson School is still up in the air. We may have to hire someone, pay someone for it, and roughly it's $8,500 expense. They're going to put up a quorum for a current rate. That's the number they gave me, so I'd like to create a line item just in case Thompson's falls through, we have to hire someone, and it will be reimbursed from a Kibbe Sales or John Law, since that might even come out of the conservation, too.
You would have to decide, the, that Land Board is not under the Planning and Land Use Department, that's a Select Board Committee, so you, it's just a matter of do you want to put it under administration, or do you want to put it under Planning and Land Use currently? Suzanne, who works for the Selectment Office, is the one who does the agendas and the minutes for that.
Personal transparency, I'd like to see a line item, so if it comes up.
Well, if you look at the 4439, Land Use Forest and Trails, I would think you could increase the forest line if you wanted to put money in there with an intent of using it for forest management plans.
Currently, they're just, they're using it for trail maintenance.
Yeah, that's all it's used for now, is trails. Really very little on forests.
To build kiosks and...
And if it's going to come from the conservation fund, it wouldn't go in the operating budget.
Right. Well, John Law is verbally going to add, he's committed to it, so.
Well, if they're going to receive the revenue from, say, Tampose Forest Cutting, they should be wanting to pay for the forest management plan that they're going to be receiving from.
It's other Town and Land though.
If the town has lands that are going to be receiving revenue from, we should, we should put something in there, but I haven't yet seen what Town Lands has manageable forests that's not under the purview of the Conservation Commission. So that's something maybe the Lands Committee should look at more closely, separating out those two, and coming forwards, well, here are three parcels, or five, or whatever the number is, of forested town land that's not under conservation, that we need to get a forest plan for, and then we'd have a number to put, but I think the location to put it would be this forest and trails line. We should get a better number, yeah.
The forest and trails line, if it's not conservation land, if it's conservation land, it doesn't need to be in this budget at all.
Correct, correct.
Because it comes out of Conservation Fund.
Tracy, there's a question. Tracy, please.
So, in reference to that forestry and the lands use committee, isn't that a directive that would come from the Select Board as a whole? So we would need to bring that forward in a public meeting, discuss it, and approve that before adding any dollars to the budget anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Please.
Just got this, so, Dale was pointing out, if we look at bullet eight on the September 25th memo, the $1,000, it looks like in the budget it's $1,500?
Yes.
Because the 2.34 percent is correct with the $1,000, it would be a lower percentage of $1,500.
I'm good with the justification of the $6,000, but which one do you, are you asking more?
The $6,000 for the, for the advertising.
Will that change the 2.34 percent?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it'll make it go up.
Okay.
Make it smaller, right? The percentage is down.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Any more from the board?
I've got a question going forward. It would seem that cutting the $1,000 earned time buyout is an item that has been proposed and which I've heard no opposition. Does the board want to wait until the end to make changes like this? Do you want to make changes as you go along by your vote? Do you want to wait and let the ABC bring it in as part of their report? How do you want to manage changes that you're making to the proposed budget?
Well, I, for one, would like to make changes as we go along, but how's the board feeling? Please. Comments?
I can tell you, I've been holding off and just making comments that way and come back to everything and we can...
All right, you want to hold off, okay.
Doesn't matter.
Is that the rest of the board feeling?
Hold off.
All right, so the rest of the board, they want to hold off then?
I've got a list of things that I know need to be changed, and I'll bring them all in, then when we're ready for that. And I think, I think, I think there's something in Tom Clerk that we've got to look at those salary lines. I think Peter is correct, so we'll, we'll look at those.
All right, so you have enough for the question, Asha, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Moving on.
$1,500, you mean 1.8 percent?
Oh, really?
Yep, so it drops to about half percent.
Moving on, we have a library presentation, please.
What do you want up on the screen for the library? Do you want the overview, or do you want the...
Thank you.
...
That's what you want?
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you. Is this what you mailed us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Tracy, you going to sit up there?
Yeah, I'm gonna, it was just easier to cross this row.
All right, thank you.
Right in front of him.
Yes, I shall sit behind Melissa. Melissa, when you're ready, please. Okay. Juan Melissa Hewitt, the new director of the Barrington Public Library, and I also want to preface this presentation, but this is my first time ever giving a public budget presentation, so please bear with me. So, off we go. I wanted to highlight some of the changes in my budget based on last year, since some stuff has stayed the same and there are some small-ish changes. I did include the COLA and STEP increases for all staff as approved by the Select Board, with the exception of my two part-time desk clerks. They are currently paid at a grade five STEP 2, and they would be bumped up to, I'm hoping to be bumping them up to grade five STEP 6, which would be $11.06 an hour, which is still under the average amount that is paid to library desk clerks. In libraries comparable to our size, they usually get paid $13 an hour, so I figured baby steps. I would like to keep my wonderful part-time staff and not lose them to McDonald's, where they could start off at the same amount of money. So we, I have included that. And I also included an extra two and a half hours per week for one desk clerk. This would allow for the desk clerks to be able to go over the projects they've been working on throughout the day, since now one leaves at 1:00, 1:30, the other doesn't come in until 3:00, so there's a big gap in who has to run our front desk, and that's the busiest place of the library. It also would allow for a staff meeting, a brief staff meeting, to happen monthly, which would be wonderful to keep everybody on the same page. So those are the only changes to my wages benefits second time lines. The next big change was in my contracts line. Those are some interesting changes because some things I don't get to build until later on in the year, and they have changed off and on. My web person, Piper Webbs, we have decreased our monthly payment to them because they no longer offer our event registration in calendar modules, and for that reason, there's also been an increase because we've had to find an outside vendor for that. The first part of the new event registration module was covered by the library, the installation fee and the first year, so we are starting with next year asking for the town to pay for that. That was the one big increase there. Along with having that extra, external contract, excuse me, event registration module, it's, takes away from staff time. They don't have to call people and confirm, they don't have to, there's a lot that they won't have to do, they'd be able to, it's all automated with this new system, and so that was a nice change. And then another portion that changed in our contracts line is the Ancestry Library Edition and Heritage Quest databases. Those are all databases that the state libraries buy into, and it's all based on population size and library usage equation that they do at the state level, and our cost has actually gone down a little bit. So, the difference this year is the fact that it's an increase in the event registration part. And then what else is another change? Our programs line. I have requested an additional $1,500 in this line, pretty much because that was what was donated this year to give us, and that's really to cover summer reading program, along with some other highly requested programming for the older community. I often get asked by them to do cooking classes and art classes, and on average, those classes are about $150 to $300 apiece, and those bring unbelievable amounts of people to our library. They're almost always waitlisted, and we can only hold about 20 to 30 people in one of those. Also, this year, for our summer reading program, Federal Savings Bank was a major sponsor, and they donated $1,500. So looking at what they donated as a supporter and sponsor of our summer reading program, looking forward to next year to offer similar programs, plus a little bit more, without the amount of sponsorship as we got from Federal Savings Bank this coming year, this would help allow us to continue and even increase our programming for our library What else? Summer reading program is a great time, too, for the kids and the adults, it's a little friendly competition. We have one woman this year who is an older woman who lost her husband last year. She comes, she was our top reader for the summer reading program, and she loves seeing all the little kids come in and, you know, just being able to offer really cool programming for kids and different experiences, because that's what library's all about, is just bringing new experiences and information to people. So we've done some pretty cool things and hope to do that in the future. Another line item that has changed is the book maintenance, that 4439. That's just a slight increase because my books, it all depends on what's available from my vendor, if it's hardcover or paperback, and how they come to us pre-covered. And I noticed this year, we're getting awfully close to fully expanding that line, based on average purchase sizes and that sort of thing, so I just added a little extra in there to cover future purchases. My copier lease is due to expire in February, and our current vendor, which is a local business, the Seacoast Business Solutions, I shopped around, and they are by far the best deal going. They have a comparable machine, but new aren't more efficient at $139 per month. Plus, we have to add in overages. We pay, we're allowed in like $30,000 black and white, and then we pay for every color print, so that's why there's been the increase in that particular line. We've been trying to do more event information flyers and that sort of thing in-house, so our costs have gone up a little bit there with the amount of printing that we do. The black and white's not a problem, but it's the color that gets us, because I believe that's eight cents a page. So those are the changes there. The conferences and training line has been increased. This is my hope to offer my two full-time employees access to other library association memberships. I just recently went to the New England Library Association Conference and was just amazed to see what other libraries are doing throughout New England, and it would be great for my other full-time staff to have this professional development opportunity. But with that also comes with additional membership fees, which I believe is about $50 increase to that budget line. I don't think we've got to that one yet. But that would be a great chance, and every year it's somewhere different. This year it was in Rhode Island, next year it's in Connecticut, so it's a three-day conference that would be great for them to attend. And then, another reason why for that increase, in the past, the previous director has shared the cost of a hotel room with another librarian throughout New England, and if two people from Barrington are going, there's no reason why we can't share the same hotel, so we would have to absorb more cost there. And following up with that, the dues and fees line, again, the, my IT librarian and my children's librarian, their memberships have increased by $5. That's just across the state, and then it also includes $40 for each of them to have a NILA membership. Having the NILA New England Library Association membership allows them to go to the conference at a reduced rate, so it's pretty advantageous for them to have this extra opportunity. And then last but not least is my digital materials line, 4643. I am amazed by how many audiobooks and eBooks Barrington residents use. It's amazing. I was floored. Two months in a row, I've gotten emails and phone calls saying, "I can't get into Hoopla. I work watch," because it's all a cost-per-month type situation, and people haven't been able to access it because we've reached our daily threshold. So, in the past, I know that this line has been split with the town and then the miscellaneous library account, where our fines and fees would cover the difference. And I believe this year, I asked for the town to contribute a little bit more, and the library fund would cover a little less, just because it's the town asking for access to these audiobooks, eBooks. It's also comic books and movies and music. I did a quick statistic thing, and it came up that it's $2.54 per audiobook download and $1.57 per eBook. And the good thing about our digital materials line is that what we're paying for, it's a service called Hoopla, and that's a cost-per-use model, where the New Hampshire Overdrive, or Libby, as some people know it as, that is just what's available through the state, so that has long waitlists, and you, I waited for a book and it was 64 weeks, and I needed it in four weeks, so it wasn't going to work. But if I went to Hoopla and got it there, I could have it instantly, so it just gives our patrons more access quickly. And it's great for those who, you know, live here and work far away and need something to pass the time. So that's the main operating budget changes that I have.
So your due request is going to be $335,912.53? Did you raise the two from the original?
Yep, $335, and that includes the $335,912.
$53.
$53 includes an $8,000 first bond council that was recommended when we met with John Scruton to go over the future for the library, new library project. What do I need to look at moving forward is going to change my budget, what we would be responsible for, and that was the first thing that came up for 2019, was that first bond council.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Peter, do you have any questions?
This is my next question.
This is my night being confused. On the spreadsheet that you've given us, there's a total 2019 budget, and then there's a 2019 proposed budget.
The proposed budget is what we are asking the town for. The total 2019 is with everything that we would get from our fees and fines and the anticipated grants and donations. So that, the difference is showing what we would get from outside sources.
One of the comments we had made at our meeting last Wednesday was whether the $8,000 should be coming from the foundation or be part of the town's legal line. Unless we're going to go back to that, John, I'm not sure kind of philosophically where we are with legal lines now.
Yeah, well, talking with the chairman, he seems to think that we should go back that direction.
I'm going to, I'm going to be a question for the board.
I think that's going to be a later discussion. Your point's well taken.
May I have a quick question regarding the $4,573 increase to employee benefits? It appears that the total actual wages paid have gone down.
It's the difference between Amy's salary and my, the previous director's salary and my salary.
No, I understand that, I understand where it's generated from. How could the employee benefits line be going up if the total amount of wages paid have gone down?
Because last year, we had one employee go from part-time to full-time, and that started this year after the budget passed.
There's also a census change from a two-person to a family.
And that.
The prior select board approved the change to a benefits eligible after E possession?
It was, they both benefit eligible, they, the.
Their usage changed.
Their usage changed.
Very good.
Peter, do you have any further questions?
No, not unless somebody else wants to. Are we okay?
All right, well, thank you. Peter, I move the board. Anybody else on the board have further questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't see anything in here from the technology and security and IT that basis. Is that, am I just missing it?
I did, no, there was one small change. There was the, in the contracts, Piperwebs, that was one small increase, was the SSL certificate for non-Chrome users, I believe it was, just an extra security layer that is a simple certificate that we could have there.
I think, George. I think that much, many times your technology is taken out of the capital reserve.
The tech fund.
Every, every year, they, we put money in and they tend to use it out. So it doesn't really accumulate very far, but that's, that's often used in technology.
So one of the recommendations that the technology committee had in reviewing it is that the library has remained largely separate. And as we're starting to build a good technology infrastructure that protects the town and ensures that the town is well protected and safe from data breaches and things like that, was that the library plan to at least have Rockport come in and do an assessment, the same as the town has done, to make sure that the library is as well protected as the town is going to be.
Okay. I'm looking and.
I know that is a big concern from the technology standpoint, is ensuring that there's not that risk.
Well, I know, right. And I know with our programs that we use, there's a whole other level of security that's involved in that because of American Library Association protection privacy type thing. So.
John. Perhaps it would be a good idea to have Rockport staff that we have come regularly, Eric or someone else, have a discussion with David on what you're doing and to look at it, if you don't mind doing that.
Yeah.
Eric comes usually the, every other Monday or sometimes every Monday.
So just email him and ask him this one.
Schedules with Connor.
So you guys are looking at an overall of 5.18% increase?
Depending upon whether or not that $8,000 stays in our budget or whether that goes back as Chairman Bailey was saying, we'll talk about later. That would obviously significantly decrease that percentage if that $8,000 pre-bond council was going back the old way.
Yeah, it would bring you down about two and a half. Well, no, it's about two and a half percent. About two, yeah, two and a half, I think is what it would get you down around 3% total.
Yep.
I mean, I think that would be a good idea. I had asked them to put it in here so that we didn't miss it, but I think increasing the legal line to reflect it in the town side would make sense.
Do we have any, what I'd like to discuss is the, is the library's line of 4332 of $8,000. To remove that, and then when the time comes, have John put it on the town's legal line that way there, it will decrease the percentage of the operating budget for the library. Does anybody have any comments, objections, or anything else, how we can work this out? Anybody have a check to doing that? All right, so John, if you'll make a note of that and take care of that. Thank you.
There's some changes that I'll make just because we've said we're doing them and they're not affecting the bottom line much, like where we put the $5,000 for the $300. This one here, I'll do the same, but I indicated to the board I better go through and readjust some of the benefit lines as we get better handle on the census, as well as the slight decrease in health insurance we receive. Those kinds of things I'll look at and try to do those all at once.
Well, we're here. Does the board have any more questions they want to ask? John, I mean, Peter, do you have any other questions you want to ask? Saying that, I will close the budget portion. Okay, go ahead.
When are you planning on addressing the bond?
That's next.
Oh, is it?
If I may, George.
Please.
When you ask for Peter, I assume any budget committee member can speak if you're seriously addressing it to Peter. I just don't want the other members of the board to think they can't speak it.
We're going through him anyways.
Yeah, that was, that was the instruction.
Just want to make sure the whole ABC is capable of addressing anything. So, so next, are the two warrant articles in for the library?
Yeah.
That's right. It's okay. I was going to, in my, I was going to forget the last one.
So we have two warrant article request forms in your packet. The first one, I believe we should have in the same order, is that we are requesting to add $3,000 to the Library Technology Capital Reserve Fund. These funds are saved yearly to be used towards the purchase of technology equipment upgrades and additions. This is something that you see us pretty much doing every year. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Peter.
Is there any cap on how high the capital reserve might get?
That's a great question.
Not that I know of, but we have some big projects.
Big projects to come in these years that we'll be spending quite a bit.
The balance as of summer was just under $8,000 in that fund.
Why does it say 40,000?
4,800, where?
So the one on the.
Oh. On banks.
Did you make a withdrawal after this date, which was August 31st? It may be that that was the amount before we added to it in March.
I think that is correct because I'm looking at what I had was a different amount, it was a lower amount to begin with, so that's why I had.
Beginning of the year, you would have had less because we put 3,500 in, I mean, 3,000 in April.
Probably a cycle. That'd be 4,800.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry to speak up.
No, please stay up.
Would you say, say it again, please?
I was saying, I'm guessing it's probably supposed to be 7,800 instead of 4,800. We may have, and forgive us and the board for that oversight, that might have been, we forgot the additions in March.
What I have here are the balances that the trustees hold. Now, if you haven't drawn, if you have an expenditure which, or due to from that you haven't drawn from there, then it's lower. But this is what the trustee said you had at the end of August.
So that would be right.
I have 4,818 and where I keep track of, and I had the one reduction of 3582, to use a pool.
I suspect what's missing is the money that went in in April, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. And if I did, if I did add in that 3,000, that would bring my total that I have to 7,818. Like I added in that 3,000. Okay. And that's when the shift between directors happened? So I have context for that.
I mean, I'm pretty sure you have 78 if you have a, an expenditure which you have not drawn yet because this is, I'm sure what they have is an accurate amount of what the bank has in the, in the plan for you.
Right.
So I'm just curious, is the library committee and everything open to the idea of the technology committee finds some glaring deficiencies, utilizing resources to go fix those?
I would have to look at what they have to say in comparison to library law because I think the ALA law may trump the technology plan just because there's certain safety protocols that we have to maintain that may be different from what the, what people may find. But I'd be more than happy to learn about it and see if we can make them work, but.
Right. I think all we're looking to do is make sure that ultimately the town is protected.
Sure.
You have 7897 as of August 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for that confusion.
Sorry about that.
Please continue.
All right. So no other questions on that warrant article? Good on that one. So the second warrant article is still evolving, but we have changed our bond request to be a maximum of $4,500,000. So to request a bond in the amount of $4,500,000 to build a new library, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What am I saying? $4,500,000. Thanks, everyone. Here we go. The Barrington Library Foundation will have raised $500,000,000, and these monies will be used to furnish the interior of the building. So this is our current warrant article. The big, the big change being that we have capped our bond at 4.5. I'm not sure what questions you have regarding this. Okay.
Peter, do you, do you have any from the ABC on this $4,500,000?
Next.
Thank you. Anybody on the board? Dan?
So the bond's going to be 4.5 million.
It could hopefully.
And then less than $500,000, so it'll be a $5,000,000 project? Or it'll be a $4,000,000 project?
It would be a $4.5 million project. The way I understand it to work is that the money raised by the foundation has to be used differently, and they're not including it in the bond. That number came from certain items being taken out of the architect's plans, like the plan and the design, which is still ever-changing, and the goal is still to bring the 4.5 down. That's the max that we would ask for.
All right.
It includes cost of loans. Yeah, it, my understanding is it doesn't have to be used separately, but it can be used separately, and the foundation would like to use it separately. So that, just, just to clarify, it's not law that they have to use it separately, but that's a choice that the foundation, which is raising the money, is making in the process. The question I had has to do with, how far have you come with getting the bond bank estimates for what the repayment costs are going to be for the, usually, there can be any number of options as to whether or not it's level principal, level payment, whether it's 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. Has the trustees discussed those options? And do you have any handouts on the, what your current, I understand we're not binding you to one, but what your current preferred option is?
Sure. So in speaking with the people at the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and working with, let me pronounce this incorrectly, Divine and Development, they've been working with us all through this. They've given us quotes, obviously they're forecasted because they can't, no one gives us right the second. In order to be in the June sale for the bonds, they've given us quotes for a 15-year estimated schedule and a, I have two of the same, a 20-year estimate schedule. And I believe it was the principal rate, so that, wait, is that right? The principal rate, so their tax, it's a 15- or 20-year bond based on either level debt or level principal repayment plans. And those all have different, the 15, 20-year plans have different percentages as well as the debt.
The debt, yeah.
Could we maybe get copies of those later?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
The other question has come up before the board, and please, Tracy, go ahead.
Have you had a study of the hardline furnishings that you're considering paying $500,000 for? Assuming the library needs like.
Sure.
Very unique hardline furnishings, so.
And the amount that is going to be put towards that would, the architect knows the current rate for a lot of the specialty furniture stores. I don't know what your vendors that you would call for, but he, he knows that that amount of money would definitely furnish what we would need, including growth as well.
And also remembering that there are other spaces that we need to use that, that separate foundation money for. There are other costs that come up, working with a construction management firm, a pre-vote cost for certain things, post-vote. So that $500,000 isn't necessarily just going to one thing. It's covering other costs in and out before the vote that we needed to do as well. So if you're thinking maybe there's a disparity in that cost, there's some of that.
Is this build subject to the Davis Bacon Act?
No.
It's not?
It should not be because there's no federal money in it. That was what would tie it to Davis Bacon.
So none of the bonds are trickling down?
No.
Okay.
Now I have a question from the.
Marie had a question too.
We said we weren't taking any comments.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you. The question I have for the board, I would ask that we, me, the select board, have stated that we wouldn't put anything into the upcoming budget to offset the money's being put in for the library. We wouldn't compete with you. And we would be looking to have that.
That's not what we're saying.
If you want to change it over weekend, but what we're looking for is that you give us the assurance that if something should go wrong for you, that you will not put it in again for the next year. John, John or Andy can help clarify that.
My, my understanding is that the last time we proposed a $2 million bond for the town hall, that you had requested we not do this so the library could go forward alone. And what we have before us is a proposal from the person willing to donate the land that we, we could go for design money this year with a plan to bond in 2019. I mean, with a plan to bond, to go for a bond in 2020, but we just didn't want to run into the same problem in 2020 if in fact, where we ended up with both a library bond and the town hall bond in 2020. So I believe what George's question was, is the library willing to agree that if the selectmen put off the town hall bond in 2019, are you willing to let the town hall go be the only bond project in 2020? I think that's, Andy, I have.
I'm glad somebody's able to clarify. That's exactly where I was headed. Thank you, John.
I think that that is a question that we would need to bring back to our trustees and our foundation and all of the, lots of people working on this. That's not a decision that myself or Melissa can make alone. I don't think that's, I don't think that's something that we can sit here and make that decision.
That's fine. We wouldn't expect.
Yeah, sure. So I think that obviously there are lots of people here from the library, thank you all. But everyone's heard of, yeah, we'll, we have some meetings coming up. We'll discuss it and we'll get back to you if that's appropriate.
The, the background, I don't know if you're aware of, but there is a developer willing to give the land to the town if the town builds within, if the town goes for a, it's in my report if you want to, it's online. But if the town is willing to go for $50,000 to design, so they seriously come forward with a project in 2019, if construction begins by the summer of 2021, then he'll give the land, otherwise the offer is withdrawn. If the design article fails, the offer, offer is withdrawn. And the reason being, he doesn't want it to sit there and nothing happened to it for a long period of time. And so the board was interested in pursuing that option. I haven't found out from the board yet whether or not I've indicated to the board what it is, but we're going to have a discussion a little bit later under my report. But assuming the board wants to go forward, I wanted to know... I didn't want to run into the situation in 2020 that we just took action to avoid in 2019, which is to have two bonds, so...
Thank you, John.
Is that accurate, Georgia, what we're talking about?
Andy? You gave me the helpful answer. Do you have anything else you want to add to it?
Well, I was just disagreeing with what you were saying earlier. But I think a broader discussion needs to happen.
With his report.
Just a general, I think there's a broader discussion that needs to happen.
Any further questions, Peter, for the library? Any questions from the board or the library? Saying that, I will close the budget. Thank you both very much, I appreciate it. Moving on, we have public comments, please. Please remember, if you have public comments, your name will be named, and if necessary, I'll ask you to spell it out. Is there any public comments? Do you have any public comments? Please come forward to the podium.
Jim Farnum, Lendem's Landing Road. I had a question. We have a question as to the extent to which the town might be willing to take over the maintenance of the road. People that live there didn't develop it. I don't know the answer to that question, so...
In order to let everybody know that you have to go through a portion of Nottingham?
Yep.
Have to go through Nottingham in order to get to their road. And what I would like to suggest, sir, is that you possibly start with Nottingham. Thank you. And ask them what procedures you're going to have to go through in order to get that changed to a Class V.
I don't know what class it is now, and I don't know what a Class V is.
All I can say to you is that I will have John take it under advisement and research it from there, and we can get back to you.
Why don't you give us a call at the office? Either Connor, myself, or Suzanne. And I know you've been in contact with Suzanne.
I have.
What Georgia is referring to is that if we're going to look at this road for engineering and compliance with the standards for a public road that was accepted by the town, they also wanted to know that Nottingham was on board for it, because otherwise, we would be going over a private road to get to a town road to maintain it. So I think unless the board disagrees, I think it's important that Nottingham be a part of this discussion as well as Barrington. Does that make sense, John?
I guess, I mean, the road's about a mile long, and eight tenths of it is in Barrington, and all the people live in Barrington, so it seems to me that it would be largely Barrington's prerogative to do something with the road. Only a small portion of it is in Nottingham.
But we can't get to our part without going over Nottingham, and we don't want to be going over private roads to get to public roads.
Okay, so...
As I said, we'll take it under advisement, we'll put it all together for you, and then we'll explain it, because then if you have any questions, we can go through it that way. Because right now, we don't have the answers for you for what you're asking.
Yeah, we can contact Nottingham, but why don't you give a call to us tomorrow, Connor or myself? And I think you already have our contact information.
I do.
For you, again, your other question?
Because my understanding, for Route 4, you go in, you bang a left right at the dam, that is the town line.
Just about.
So it's a good stretch to the dam. So for Route 4, you're in Nottingham until you get to Barrington?
Right, that's correct.
That's going to be part of everything we put together.
I don't think, I don't think it's as far as the dam. The dam's about three tenths of a mile in. And it used to be a sign there when I moved in, and I think it's more like two tenths, but I don't know what it's two tenths.
Jim, I appreciate you coming by with your comments. And I'm sure that you will have all the answers that you're seeking after you get a chance to look at it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for coming. And any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, I will move on. We want to have a review in the minutes from October 22nd, 2018. Is there any changes in our missions that anybody would like to bring up? I have a second, any further discussion? Stand by. Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye. Motion carries, minutes are accepted, October 22nd, 2018. John, you are up next.
Oh.
To have the administrators before.
The first item has to do with the waiver of a building permit fee. There's a nonprofit group called Building Dreams for Marines that would like to build a deck for a disabled vet in Barrington. The group would, needs a building permit. They've talked to John Huckins about what they need to do for construction, and they request that the town waive the $75 building permit fee for the deck. We have done that before for nonprofits, and the question is, will the board waive the building permit fee for Building Dreams for Marines for this project?
Selectman Hattikoff, select person Hattikoff.
I am absolutely in support of waiving this building permit.
Would you like to make a motion, please?
If there's no other discussion, I would make a motion to waive the $75 fee.
Mr. Ne, you have further discussion?
No, I was just going to make the motion, but I'll second the motion instead.
I have a first and second, I have a second on the motion and further discussion. Selectman Air, you had your end up?
I was a second.
See, we have no further discussion, I have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye.
Fairly aye. Motion carries, John, you can head that.
Thank you. Electricity rates. For several years, Doug Langdon's group, which is Access Energy, has assisted the town in going out to bid on electric rates. As you know, you're able to choose any electric generator that you choose. Eversource will deliver that electricity. So when you get an electric bill, a portion is Eversource for transmission maintenance, and a portion is the generation cost. We have been saving money on a regular basis as a result of this. There is no guarantee going forward. It's the standard past performance does not guarantee future performance. However, right now, we're still at points in the last, during this last contract, we've been saving over one and a half cents per kilowatt. Right now, the bidding would probably save us at least a penny. But come February, there will be new rates. We don't know what they will be. Our contract expires in January. My request is that we authorize Doug to go out again for price discovery, bring it to the board, and then the board can make a decision. As you remember, these quotes last less than a day. So when they come in, you have to make an immediate decision, but the, I mean, you have to make a decision that we want to go with this quote, provided nothing major changes tomorrow. And what they'll do is they'll come in with various terms, from one year, one and a half, two and three, and the, he takes all of our electric data in terms of load and usage, and gets a quote on that. So I would, does the board wish to proceed with price discovery? And George and Tracy have a question.
Just Tracy, have a...
Does price discovery cost us anything for assessment fee?
No.
So I would make a motion to proceed with price discovery.
I have to give a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Dan Air. Any further discussion?
For information is up. Are we done in the best?
He does, he does receive three tenths of a cent on the kilowatt as a charge for doing the work, but will still save, you know, money as a result, so...
Further discussion? Seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go, John.
The police station. The fire protection engineer indicates that the building does not have to be sprinkled as a part of the renovation for the police station. The board had requested more information. I have sent out that additional information. I cut and pasted from the letter. I have given you the copy of the letter as it is to answering the police station question. Rick had a question as to whether or not the building should have been sprinkled from the beginning. And that's a different question, but the answer to that is one that is currently still being studied. But it appears that maybe the building should have been sprinkled right from the beginning for a number of reasons. John Huckins is here, as well as Rick. The Boker code is what is being cited, which is the code that John works with rather than the life safety code, which was interesting, because I thought the fire protection engineer would be working mostly with the fire code. I assume she is working with the stricter of the two codes as it applies. The question today, as we continue to research whether or not the building needs to have something done as to sprinkling, is it's pretty clear that the police station work will not trigger the sprinkling. So what I would like to do is to proceed with the paying an architect to draw up schematic plans that would be sufficient for us to go out to bid. You would authorize going up to 2,500. The budget is listed here in the details, and it would be 4,000. And the question becomes, do you want to proceed with the architect? Or do you want to wait until we have further researched this whole question of the building as a whole?
Discussion for the board? Dan?
I don't think we need to suggest a building as a whole, because we need to address the police. As a person, agenda that we would push to go off too long. And I don't think it's that detail of a plan, $4,000, that's the quote we got.
The quote is 4,000, and he indicates that it's for travel, meeting, sketches with options, drafting, specifications on the drawings, and then a review of the final drawings and drafting it up. He figures it's about 30 hours of time. This is, they indicated the company that we're talking to that they had done police station work before. Somebody is certified in there on police station. They look at the plan, and they said, well, you really ought to change this, and this, and this, just a little. And they, they had, they didn't go into great detail, but we're looking forward to working with them. Bob is here, if you would like to have him talk a little more about that. John Huckins is here, as well as Rick. So any one of the three of them could speak on different aspects of what is being requested.
Select person Hattikoff?
So it's my understanding from looking at your report, John, that you are just asking us to approve an additional expenditure of $1,500 on the plans?
Yes.
And that we've come to the understanding that a fire suppression system is not required with the changes to the police station?
Yes.
So, ready for a motion, or do we need more discussion?
Ready for the discussion.
I have comments to the police. What are you looking for for a comment?
Do we accept $1,500, or we don't?
We approve the money, we don't. We already had your comments.
Well, actually, we're not redesigning the buildings up. The sketches I've seen before is up. And then to get there, I'll see these exercises up done. It's not rocket science, what he wants to do there.
This is just disagreement with winning the extra $1,500?
Yeah, it was only a mostly $200 job, and it's kind of expensive. The work's already done then, because we're talking about $50,000 renovation. $4,000, the architect?
The quote came in at 82,000.
One quote.
One quote, that's all we got, was one quote, because we didn't have detailed enough blueprints to provide to get better quotes, which is why we're here and having this discussion.
Shall we move on? We have a request for an additional $1,500. Any more comments on that?
I'll make a motion for, to, to add an additional $1,500 to the budget for quoting detailed drawings for the police.
And I would second that.
Vote first and second for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye or opposed? Motion carries, four to one. Please note that, select person, Dan, doesn't want to approve it.
As I mentioned during the library discussion, the owner of the property that was willing to donate land is willing to wait another year, but doesn't want to just have nothing happen during that year. And what he is requesting is that the board place a warrant article for $50,000 for architectural design for the proposed town hall. We've discussed that we're looking at a smaller building. We've had changes because of staffing and technology changes, so that we would look at designing not bid plans, but looking at the site, looking at what would be needed so we could have a good estimate on the cost to go for a bond in 2020. If the design article passes, the offer would be good for 28 months to start construction, which would give the board of selectmen two bites at going for a bond if it looked promising, but for 2020. And that is, what does the board wish to do?
Discussion, please. Tracy?
We have three sets of prior plans.
The set of prior, no. What happened is, most of the sets, we had, two of the prior sets of plans was to renovate the old building, which no longer exists. So those plans have gone by the wayside because they were renovation plans. The two sets, the two proposals use the same plan, basically, for the new building, but those engineering, architectural designs were given to the library, and the library has used and modified those. So they're now out of the library plan. So right now, we have a copy of the floor plan, let us say, and that's probably all that is of value, the space needs study and the floor plan from before. But as far as the architectural design, you're going to a different site. You'd have to do a new review of, you know, septic well, the subsoil, and you're also going to have to look at what changes have occurred. We pretty much decided we need less space for record storage. We're probably building a smaller meeting room. So you're going from a 12,000 building to something under 10,000. So we have a place to begin, but we're not ready to start trying to sell this to the public or to even put a dollar price tag on it.
Tracy, do you have anything else?
No, it's, it's just been noted that we have, and by noted, I mean publicly, that we have spent a large amount of money designing plans over and over and over again. And I would like us to be very clear, if we're going to bring this forward, that we outline why we're looking at this property and asking to design on this property.
Yeah, I mean, the last design is on property that the board has agreed the library can build on using that plan. So that's what happened to the last plan. The first two plans are no longer relevant because the building was torn down.
I think the concern that I have is if the library warrant article goes through, and is it our intention, I guess I'm asking this, is it our intention, regardless of whether the library warrant passes or fails, to follow through on this property on 125? Because it would be much cheaper to build on this particular soil? Is that, is that our plan going forward?
It may not be cheaper to build on this property, but the library will undoubtedly want to continue to try to locate at the other site, and I don't think the selectmen would take that site back at this point because of that commitment.
Okay.
The other thing you have to, we all have to realize is that is, we started with the original building, just asking for renovations to make ADAs. the original building, just asking for renovations to make ADA requirements. And every time we have gone forward, I say we, the board of selectmen and the select board, well, select board has to check, but it will, go forward and ask the town to support this, and, and they have not supported it in any way. And I can understand their concerns Tracy about the fact they don't have any thing to show for all the money we spent. But right now, with the help of technology and everything else, we've been able to cut back the space needed. And even when, when I made my comments at the, last night, the last discussion we had going from 12 to 10, I, I was amazed at just what technology was going to save us. And so I think it's, it's fair for the town. Right now, we're renting a building, we're renting it, and we're paying, we're losing the tax money and everything else, but we're also responsible for other items under the contract. We have to outlay money. And, I mean, if they say no again, it's, 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 that's right. Dan, you heard the comments?
I agree with John and stuff. I get about architects before. We have spent a lot of money and stuff, but the scope of work has changed and all the features that our needs has changed and stuff. We need a good set of plans to get a good price. Stuff that's older than last ones.
Yeah, but this, these are not going, this is not going to be the plans. This is going to be a conceptual drawing with the mechanics on a second sheet. Tracy?
From what I heard John just say, this is going to be a final space needs assessment.
I think we need to do that as part of the plan.
It's going to be the actual septic review and layout on the property.
There'll be some civil engineering that we need to have.
Okay, so will we be done with, should we choose to expend the $50,000? Will we then have everything we need to propose next year an actual town hall built?
There's two answers. Yes, but...
No, I just want money.
You will have everything you need to go into the town hall, but you won't have everything you need to bid. In other words, the, the detailed spec that is needed to go out to bid is what added about $100,000 to the, to the architectural work three years ago. And all of that architectural was given to the library because they still have to do the heating, the electric, all of that.
So where is that $100,000 going to come from?
It would have to come out of the bond article as part of, when you either do a design bid, a construction manager, or a bid, bid, or a design and then, or a design build.
So we could bring this forward to the voters, ask them for $50,000, create the first stage of this?
Yes.
And then still not be able to do it because we need another $100,000? No?
No, no, it'll all be part of the, it would be part of the $2 million project or whatever it costs for building it.
Okay.
No, you don't want to go back to the voters again.
Oh, please, yeah.
You need to go for the bond for the building itself. And if I may, I would almost think that a design build based off that spec would be the way that you would end up going, but you might, you know, you've got several options on how you proceed. We have done design build before successfully. We have done bid and then build successfully. I think as long as you have good people that you're using, either way will work.
Done.
I forgot. I was just going to ask. Oh, no, I take that back. I think as far as for myself goes, one of the most important things, I, when they come up with 10,000 square feet, 12,000 or whatever, I want to be assured that this is enough, that two years from now when, when we start to build, that we don't start saying, we underbid it, we should have gone with 12 or 10 or whatever the figure is. So that to me is one, is a question that I would like to see answered by the powers that be.
It would be part of the 50,000 study. You need to make sure that's part of it.
Right. Okay, that's...
Dan, you have a comment?
Yeah, to clarify something Tracy, what John just said, depends how we handle it. It's not going to cost us another hundred grand. Once we get all the studies up, space needs all that, that's how we handle it. We put a design build, it won't cost us nothing. As long as everything's...
It will cost us nothing. It will.
My position on it really is, I mean, I, I don't love the idea of spending $50,000 to go do this. I'm not a big fan of it, but I'm also, the other piece that I look at is when we talk about designing and building of a town hall, I don't feel like we should be spending substantially more than what we're currently spending to rent a building now. So if we're spending $65,000 a year to build it and you're looking at a 20-year build, that brings you in at just under $1 million. It's 975 grand, not counting any interest tied to that money.
Except you need to keep in mind the lost revenue, and if you take 11, $15,000 multiplied out over 20 years, that makes up a large portion of the difference.
Right. It gets you pretty close.
So it's a break even and we own the property?
Yes, and that's ultimately what I'm looking at is you're not adding, you're not really creating this additional expense to the town.
It's going to be very hard to build something, it's, it's going to be very hard to build something over 8,000 square feet, 9,000, because at that price, because you're looking at, at somewhere around $100 a square foot, you simply can't build commercial property for that number, I don't believe. But John would be able to tell us better on numbers, but I think that you need to use a higher number per square foot. But the difference is you then own it at the end of 20 years and you're not continuing to pay afterwards. So even though it might cost you more for the interim, you have something that should last for another 20 years after it's all paid off.
You do, but the variables that I look at is you're going to be, your average spend right now on building a commercial building is really in the $150 to $200 square foot range. You want to build something that's really energy efficient and has longevity to it, and on top of doing all of that, I look at, you're, you're going to spend it on the front end, but I also, we'll come back to what I've said before, is I don't think we're going to need as large of a building. So I don't think we're going to need 9,000 square feet because it's going to become more efficient with the use of technology. A, a town building just isn't required, required to have that much space. And if you look, every building, town building that they're building now, they're actually finding they need less space than what they anticipated.
Every space needs done so far has been over 9,000. Now, that doesn't mean that this one won't be under, but I wouldn't expect it to be way under.
Tracy?
So it appears if, if our rate that we were paying for rent never changed, it would take 27 years to basically make up the difference of what it costs currently to rent the building. But that's assuming that rental costs don't go up over those 27 years in, in New Hampshire. That's highly unlikely. So if we got 25 years out of this building and we owned it from that point on, it'd be quite a huge return on investment for the town.
Any further discussion? So how do you feel about putting in a warrant article for the $50,000 for architectural design?
I'd make a motion for that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, please? I have a second from Dan Ayer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. Aye to aye?
Aye.
Hattuck aye.
Ayer aye.
Motion carries, John Hattuck.
Thank you. I have two or three comments on budgets. The budget committee noted that quite a few of the benefit lines have gone down. Workers' comp is the big reason. We're getting significant credits for good behavior as it were for reduction of losses, and that's the, one of the reasons why even though health insurance and retirement costs went up, the workers' comp came down. So, I, just to be aware of. The other item is that my understanding as I look back at the discussion on the night that the board approved a longevity, that it was intended to be a one-time and not an additional step. So if that's correct, then I will do that adjustment for the non-union. The union have the step, extra step guaranteed, but not for the non-union.
Any further discussion on that? Here goes John Hattuck.
That's all I have. I'm done.
All right, well, Clerk Neil is not here. Does anybody have anything for Clerk Neil?
There's just a few documents for the board to sign. If you have any questions, let me know. They are a couple of land use change taxes, a set of minutes, a manifest dated October 25th, a few leftover deed waivers from the last meeting, and a manifest dated October 24.
Thank you very much. Moving on, old business. Under old business, I have an article that I must say that I opened it up later than should have, so it was all added to everybody's packet today. It's a email that I received from John of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission on the water committee. I would appreciate if anybody would put that in your file to read and we can have a further discussion of that later on.
They, they, tomorrow was the closing on the grants, so they need either a support letter or not.
Oh, I didn't.
Sorry about that.
I had read through that document and my only comment, and I think you read it, was I think it's a little hard line of our support, almost like whatever is proposed, we would go with. And I'm personally not comfortable with agreeing to something without having the data returned to us. So I'm okay with writing a support letter. I'm just not okay with the verbiage that's in that support letter, John.
Yep, no, I don't object to that.
All right, that's good too. I have, I had some of the drawbacks, but I, I need to move on with the water committee because of all of our neighboring towns, the way they're, they are building and the demand for water continues to increase, and it's, it's getting to be the point that we are going to be the supplier without any watchdog to help us.
I would agree to the support letter with the understanding that none of the verbiage in the support letter binds the select board to any action.
Yeah, I took out some of that, but I didn't get it all out, so I'll take out...
There's a lot. There's a lot. I was a little shocked by it.
Yeah, that's okay.
Any other comments?
If you authorize, I'll send a draft out tomorrow on the lines of what you've now said, and if you agree, then I can sign it and we'll email it tomorrow afternoon.
I authorize John to send up communication.
Dan?
I'll second it. We have, we have a review of the floor.
That's what he's going to say.
Well, yeah, well, I haven't gotten that far into my sentence.
My understanding is that's one of the things you can do if you agree on a concept in a letter is review a draft without it being considered an improper meeting here. So I'll send it to you to review, and we'll do it up to make it much more generic.
Mrs. Hatch, would you please continue?
Well, John just finished what I was going to say, so I support John writing a letter with us reviewing it and then sending it out as I stated, if we're satisfied with it.
Mr. Ayer?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, under old business. The other, for under old business is the rules of procedure for the select board. John has put it all together and sent it out to us to review the changes and everything else we've put in there. So if everybody would look at it over and if they find something that is not what we agreed to, we will speak of it next meeting and change it.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I received a call late this afternoon from Walter Mitchell of Mitchell Group, municipal group, and Carrie Anne has resigned from the company so that we will be getting another attorney with the firm. I just wanted the board to be aware and Masha as well as those who handle legal matters. Two of the attorneys that we've dealt with in the past will be taking our, picking up the cases that we have ongoing.
Do we have a transition or effective immediately?
I think it's rather quick.
If you keep a surprise of any changes necessary, we appreciate it.
I just wanted to announce that.
All right. Any further old business?
I have an item.
Please.
It's just I wanted to circle back and I probably could have talked about it during budgets, but I wasn't thinking about it at that moment. I just wanted to touch base with Masha on the plot scanner. Are we moving forward with that? Are we ready to roll? Because I know we talked about it in the technology committee and we were talking with it.
I, I would be ready to go, but I don't have the money, money in my budget right now, so it's kind of up to, I know...
Yeah, I thought we were going to wait another month as far as the, to, to look at the budgets a little more closely at the end of November and then make the decision.
Sorry, I thought we were, when we looked at... I thought we agreed to it. Yeah.
We need to include that.
I'm willing to proceed. Okay, cool proceed.
Like certain that we both agree to pass that.
Just to clarify...
When John brought that up, that's what we said, just... Connor?
If I may, so the question is either to use unexpended money from this year's budget and buy it this year, or if that's not available by the end of the year, to you, to put it included in the budget during the later revision for next year. So I think that's what John was saying, wait another month to make sure the money's available. If it's available this year, buy it this year with unexpended money. And the thought was it was too early right now to make that decision.
If the board... Based on our year-to-date expenses, I think we're okay. We're, yeah, we're significantly okay.
We're significantly healthy in this.
Yes, we are. Okay, we will, we will plan to proceed with the plot.
Yeah, it's very good, yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, that was it.
Moving on, new business? Anybody have any new business to discuss? Mrs. Hatch?
This is kind of a, a subject that's probably near and dear to all of us, but it's something we don't like to talk about. I felt very bad that I did not know that Rick's sister had passed away. I've known the family my whole life, and I read it in the paper the next day. I think there needs to be some way, all the town being able to get this to us, either an email or what. But I do, like I say, is because you guys don't go back as far as I do, but I knew when he was a little boy. So I just would like to see some type of communication done with tact and compassion to let, let us know that this, regardless of who this has happened.
I think you were saying, that's very, very nice. Dan?
I agree with Don. I don't read the paper or anything and stuff. It'd be nice to get a little head drop and stuff to understand what everyone's going through.
I can download this, all right. See, we have no new business. We're going to the selectmen's report. Selectman Ayer.
There's a meeting Thursday night, conservation.
Select, select person Hattuck?
I have not attended a rectifierment meeting since last week.
Select person Hatch?
We have a meeting on the 19th. Unless they, don't cancel it. Unless they cancel it.
I'm concerned, yes. Actually, we don't have a forum, so...
Oh, okay. Then we won't be having a meeting.
Well, that's, I'm not sure we have a forum, so, yeah.
Select person there?
Technology committee had a meeting that was held at TurboCam last Thursday. Rockport Conference stand, and we are on track with everything that they're working on according to our plan. Trying to think what was, I don't have my report right in front of me from the technology committee. There was a...
Police computers.
What's that?
Police computers.
Yep, police computers are being updated.
Disposal.
Or disposal, yes. We talked about a disposal policy. That's right, that's what it was. And the hard drives are being removed from the computers as long as the board is okay with it. What they were doing is just offering the computer itself up to anybody, either in the department or any other, with no hard drives or anything, and then they can go get their own. If the board is okay with that from the disposal side, if people want to go invest the money into putting a hard drive back in. the money, putting a hard drive back into them and loading software on it, the Technology Committee didn't have an issue.
Oh, it was state of town money, actually.
Because we don't have to dispose of the disposal costs.
What would the disposal costs be on the hard drives we take out?
Those will get shredded and we get a certificate of destruction on them.
Okay, that's my question, I appreciate that.
Like, they used to wipe them. Wiping is not considered sufficient for disposal at this point. We can still recover data, so you'll have them shredded with a certificate of disposal.
Put them outside and watch them crack.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The, I mean, again, it's like I said, uh-
I'm sorry, I just didn't follow. Is, from consensus point, is everyone okay with that? Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure that there was-
In the record.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Ayer? Anything else?
Planning Board meeting on the 6th, I will not be able to attend because I will be at voting. So just to make that known, that I will not be there. I should be able to do that later.
Mr. Ayer?
I can't make it either.
It doesn't impact, like-
Doesn't impact-
The ability to have a quorum, but it just, I'm just letting the board know that I will not be there.
Well, we got, my report is, as I said, Cheryl Huckinson, we had a very wonderful time there, and she received some lovely gifts to show their appreciation from everyone, and I must tell you, that was heartwarming to hear all the praise that was being put upon her. The other issue I have, again, I will relay to you, is the library is working very hard to make sure everybody understands the new building that they are proposing. All I can say is that I would wish that everybody would go forward, look at it, or even engage one of the library trustees or another member of their boards and get the information that they have, and then we'll answer all your questions. I think it's a worthy project to need to look at. And with that, I have nothing else. The last public comment, please. Please come forward to the public comment and give your name.
It's ABC related, so I-
We'll get to it in a minute. Okay, I'm sorry. She was adding, I proceed.
Hi there, Tracy Bissin, Hall Road. I just had two clarification questions. So the first was, last year, the voters approved $750,000 to be allocated for a town hall to be built on town-owned land. Isn't that correct?
No, failed.
Oh, it did fail, okay. I thought it was approved, I apologize. Okay.
It actually never made it to vote, it didn't fail.
Well, it was changed.
It was changed, and what was changed made it to the voters, but it failed.
Right. Oh, that did fail, okay. All right, my apologies on that. My other question would be, if you are proposing $50,000 for a warrant article to study this potential new land, why wouldn't you study, I guess I'm confused that it hasn't been exhausted, all avenues haven't been exhausted on the land that currently exists, where another municipal building has been sketched out with the library, also paying for an overbuild of water and septic to, to prepare for a potential municipal building in the future, why would we not still look at that land?
I would prefer to take those comments under consideration, but Dan?
We have opportunity. There's good land, good soils, and we have future expansion for police or other town facilities. Ramsdale Lane is very limited, and I still don't believe in support everything, me personally. All the state impacts and stuff, on the surfaces and stuff, the pocket doesn't meet our home standard.
So, I mean, you're giving it up totally altogether? Just seems like we had conversations before about it still being potential.
We had opportunity coming for us.
I think you answered your question, please. You have another one?
That's it.
If I may comment.
Please, John.
I don't believe that we've given it up on it, it's just we've got another opportunity to look at, so we're going to look at another. In other words, we need, we feel we have to look at opportunities that come along. I wouldn't say that we've given up on that other site, it's just there are advantages to the one that's being proposed, we ought to look at it and see.
Okay, I guess I just ask because it comes hand in hand with the question you're asking us to wait. If our bond is turned down, you're asking us to wait so that you can bring one next year, so that's a big ask. So I guess that's why I ask why you're not still considering that land, when there's no tight restraints on that.
I will make a statement to your last comment. I think that the library individuals have worked so hard and been so front of everybody and brought everything out forward. I personally feel that we will have a new library, I think that that's my opinion. Mr. Ayer had a comment for you also.
It was just, you made the statement about overbuilding the well and the septic, and the well and septic are existing on that side. We're not putting in a new well or a new septic, from what I understand.
Oh, yeah. We did a new septic.
We have, I thought, so, but the well is existing, we're using the existing well.
Maybe a little outdated, though, I think-
I don't know what, I don't know what the plan is current, I haven't seen the current plan, so I don't know what they-
I think it needs to be moved because the septic, well, the radius is up.
All right.
I was going to add a question.
Any other comments?
No, I just, I just think that, you know, you'll be moving along on that, and it'll be just, it'll be great.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Any other public comments? Steve?
Steve Saunders, Mass Road. I'd like the board to thank John for preparing his report that you got, that advanced notice, so we can sit there for your discussion. And would like to make another try at getting some of those items actually included in the agenda itself, when it is something that is substantial decision-making, so that anybody from the public who wants to know what's going on and hear those discussions in person, would be, have advanced notice to come for the meeting.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate your comments. Any other public comment?
Just as an FYI, the new ambulants, the state's coming in tomorrow for the inspection, so the old ambulance will be taken out of service for a short amount of time, as I, I just don't have the resources to get both of them up to speed. I've been, we've been, we have been working diligently to acquire equipment so we can have both of them, but it's time to get the new one up and running, so the old ambulance will be temporarily out of service until I can acquire the remaining pieces of equipment to have them both up and running. I've been doing as much as I can out of the budget, squeezing pennies here and there. I'm reluctant to take it out of the revolving fund. We are going to be faced with probably about a $35,000 expense for a cardiac monitor coming out of that revolving fund. That's one of the things that hold me up to be where, where I need to, to have both ambulances at the advanced paramedic level, which is what I'm trying to do. I still have to work with Medical Resource Hospital and with them, all the medications and stuff that we need to carry, so, but I do have an appointment with them tomorrow at 10, assuming it was all set. The ambulance should be online tomorrow, seeing if it's all lettered. I'll have to go bring it up so you guys can look at it, but it's kind of hot, so I guess you guys have to stop down there and look at it.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add about the monitor?
It's expensive. I'm sorry, there's, we ordered a, the monitor that we have, currently we're using, is no longer being serviced. We were notified a couple of years ago that, that it's either 2021 or '22 is the end of the line for that piece of equipment. That particular company no longer manufactures cardiac monitors. FDA hasn't given an approval for anything right now, so there's two cardiac monitors in the United States, so I'll give you quotes from the two of those, and then come back to you with a recommendation as to which one we should purchase.
Thank you, Rick. We have a question, Dan?
Thank you. Also?
Any other public comments?
Sam? I'll try not to go over three minutes or even 15 minutes of public comment. First, thank you board, and ABC too, for your hard work. Budget season is a very busy time for everybody. Just on the library, I wanted to make a couple announcements on a few events coming up. First of all, Belinda, this Friday, there is a SkyWatch event from 6:30 to 8:30. Hopefully we'll have some clear skies for people to get outside and view the beautiful lake sky that we were able to see in this lovely rural town that we live in. Second is the Justice Earths Community Event happening this Saturday from 4 to 6 p.m. in partnership with the Friends of the Barrington Public Library, Sweet Toots and Semi-Sweet Toots, who'll appreciate it. And November 8th, more pertinent to the specials we've had tonight on the new library, Thursday, November 8th, we'll be having yet again another presentation of the new library plans with our architects. And that's, I guess, Thursday, November 8th, 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. at the Barrington School. And that's about all I have. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Sam. Any other further public comments?
I just want to let the public know, we are still, we are still looking for folks that want to serve on the facilities and utilities of chapter of the master plan, so if you're interested, please contact the land use office.
Thank you. Any other comments? You have a comment? No, no, thank you. All right, thank you very much. I'll close the portion.
I have three items for non-public.
We have three items for non-public, three items for non-public concerning personnel reputation. I have a motion to go with it, non-public.
I think a motion.
A motion, do I have a second? Second, Mr. Ayer? Ailey, aye? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess.